Yeah. All broken as intended. And some of those are screwed to the wall.
She's got me using them as something else.
One of those windows back there work.
Hmm. Yeah, that one looks a little.
Does look like it's cracked open, doesn't it?
Yes. This one though. I just can't see it clearly. I figured they'd have the air conditioning on.
It's the first day.
Good evening. It's six o'clock. Someone called the meeting order. Infield Select Board. And our first item on the agenda for the evening is a public hearing. My first one to RSA forty-one colon fourteen dash A. Infield Select Board will hold the second of two public hearings. To discuss the potential sale of the following vacant parcels. Uh, map fourteen lot six.
What do you say?
Yeah. So what was the open number?
The owl's being loud tonight.
Map fourteen lot six access off the rail trail known as one of the Johnston Drive properties point zero nine acres. Uh, map thirty-four lot sixty and map lot thirty-four lot sixty-one Shed Street. Lots and uh, the committee has the recommendations, uh, committee recommendations of the select board relative to the Johnston. Property and the Methodist Hill properties are online. I'm gonna take the. Motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so this is the second required hearing for the sale of property. Um, most folks are familiar with them. Uh, the first is the property at Johnston Drive. Uh, access from the rail trail. We do have an offer from the person who has the right of first purchase on it. Um, however, for any sale, we have to have public hearings so we can have a public hearing and then. Discuss any potential. Details later and the Shed Street properties are of course the town's old DPW buildings. Is there any? Comment from the public and please state your names before making stuff. Any comments from the board?
Um, I assume that we'll be opening, it says that we'll be opening both in public. Is how the RFPs went out. So we won't discuss any detail at that time, but we'll merely open an envelope, I presume.
Well, I'll be opening them at noon on Friday and then I'll. Bring them to you.
So. But I did note that the RFPs do say open in public, so we have to be aware that if anyone. Didn't want to go.
Yeah, we open all our RFPs in public.
Yeah.
I would, I guess, propose a public hearing before I thought.
Seeing no comment, take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so now the board can discuss uh, the properties that believe with Shed Street there's. The RFP is out. There's really nothing to discuss this evening until those arrive. However, the Johnston Drive property, we do have. A um, an offer from the butter. Who has the right to first purchase and go ahead and.
Yeah, we have an offer from Rick Barrow fifty thousand dollars. You guys had asked me to look into getting appraisals. I called model appraisal and then I talked to Leela Terrence Kelly and she gave me another appraiser to talk to. Both of them got back to me and said it's such an odd weird parcel. They're busy that they wouldn't really be able to get us an appraisal on that. Um, I emailed back and forth with Leela a little bit and. She came up, you know, with an offer that I put in your packet that. Um, I think we should probably go into non-public at the end of the meeting to discuss what we would like to do with that and make a final decision. If we want to sell that parcel or not.
Ooh, and for clarity from a process standpoint, they have the right to first purchase, so we have to make a decision. On their offer before we would even entertain any other offers.
Yep.
Why before we entertain any other?
Because they have a right of first, it's not a right of first refusal.
It's a different legal.
They have the right to buy it before anybody else.
As long as it.
But a right of first purchase still allows them to counter other offers.
The attorney said we really shouldn't go out looking for offers and then go back. That's not, they have the right of first purchase at a fair price. Without us going out to other people.
Yeah, and I think we knew, I think at least we knew it wasn't going to be something that you were gonna get an easy appraisal on. I mean, I said it out loud and I'm not surprised that's what we got. Not the first time we've had a weird parcel where we couldn't get.
But it's really important to do the due diligence.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. But I knew we weren't.
But yeah, no, I think that um, since it's a. Sale of property contractual discussion, doing it, having that initial thing in non-public at the end of the meeting is appropriate.
I think so.
And then um, reporting the results.
You bet.
Board. Anything else on the sale of property topics from the board or from the public? Okay, we will move on to approval of minutes from May sixth, twenty twenty-fourth.
I make a motion we approve when it's finished.
An excellent job. I second.
Any, uh, you said you seconded any discussion of the minutes or comments?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Minutes are approved. Okay, board reports. To the board reports. Tracy, why don't we start with you tonight?
I have nothing to report. We have not met. In April, nor have we yet met in May as far as energy is concerned. I'll leave Ed to touch on anything that has to do with the construction projects, of course. And other than that, I'm done.
Okay.
Uh, conservation met at the beginning of the month and I already gave you that appointment. Um, reports, I think in your pocket, you will see there is an application. Um, and I would just report that they did do uh, an appearance at the Enfield Farmers Market. A lot of folks stopped by their booth and. I don't know if I can throw Shirley in for two seconds, but surely it seemed like it was pretty well attended when I looked down market.
It was very well attended.
And we're looking for trail volunteers, looking for trail volunteers to help Craig sell, right?
House.
I have no reports since the last meeting.
Alright, uh, I'll report the planning board did meet, had a nice uh, discussion. On a couple of topics. Uh, one Lebanon continues their class six road discussion. Uh, uh, the road between, well, between one twenty and Methodist Hill Road. Um, there you have some proposals to change both the category and what and perhaps. Give up some of their classics road and as a neighboring community, they've asked for our input. And so Rob and David are preparing that to, just if it is that Enfield is, believes that public, that classics roads are valuable public. Access and service and we don't think that Lebanon should give them up. Uh, a quick one. And also had a, a good discussion around. Writing of zoning around building height, uh, certainly a hot topic in town at the moment. Um, and if anyone hasn't read it, Tim Jennings did an excellent report. Uh, just sort of surveying various buildings in town and how tall they actually are. There's many of us that are kind of poor at sort of judging heights of buildings, but if you haven't seen it, it's an excellent. Sort of visual with quick descriptions and heights of various buildings in town.
Can we have that sent around an email? I don't know.
Sure. I'm sure we can get that from Rob.
That'd be nice. I mean, I visually look at it and most of our classic buildings are quite tall, but. I, I, I come from a family that has owned some of the taller buildings, so I know they're tall, which you might not know if you didn't own them and had to do something on roof.
Some I think are taller than people think and some I think are actually shorter than people think, just in general, like, so it's nice to have sort of a. You know, uh, and of course it met, do you measure? Uh, from our current zoning, you measure from the road, but some of the buildings people see more from behind. And so they can feel different heights depending on where you view them. Anyway, it's um. It's worth a quick perusal if uh, if you're interested in the actual heights of buildings in town.
How tall is the stone building? It's like sixty-five? Another stone, the.
The.
Great Stone.
The great stone.
Redstone dwelling estimated sixty-three feet, not counting the cupolas and steeples.
Okay, because I knew it takes the seventy-five foot bucket to work that out, just seeing that city.
Yeah. And it, and it has four and a half, well, four and a half stories habitable above grade. At sixty-three feet, not counting the cupola or steeple. Done?
Um, budget committee still hasn't met. What do you know? Uh, I will be attending, I think, the uh, planning board meeting on Wednesday.
Yep, I have a conflict and will not be able to attend. Alright, any other questions around board reports? Town managers reports.
Hi, thank you. Okay, usual, I'll start with our staff report. As I'm talked about last time, the Enfield Police Department is now in the process of making an offer to a full-time certified. Police officer. We're pretty much through the background check, polygraph, all that stuff, so. It looks like we're gonna be making an offer to a full-time certified offer officer and to a police assistant. As mentioned at the last meeting, in an effort to save money, the police assistant will start later in the summer when we get closer to school. I have been talking to Chief Holland about a, maybe starting them a little earlier on a very part-time basis for training purposes, those types of things. And then starting on the, I don't wanna say full-time, the full part-time salary a little bit later in the summer. Um, Whitney Hall Public Safety Buildings are going well. Um, the, you've seen Whitney Hall lately, the second floor walls are standing on the expansion. Um, the entryway was built today and the framer should be setting the roof trusses soon. So things are, things are moving forward very well on that project. The renovation portion of the project's also going well with interior walls being completed in the library level. And they should be completed either today or soon in the lower town office portions. So um, we're excited about that. And then today they started demo of the old wall facing the expansion for the purpose of merging those two buildings together and creating the opening. So that project continues to move forward on a timely basis. It looks like we're still on time for a November, December movement date. So I'm pretty excited about that. Um, Public Safety Building, I'm happy to report that um. With the removal of the polished concrete in the Sally ports in the booking area. And then I worked with Nigley and Chase to get another painting quote because we only got a single quote on that. We got a. Quote that came back and it ended up being twenty thousand dollars cheaper than the original painter. Those two projects together allowed us to add the roofing insulation and go from a twenty-year guaranteed roof to thirty-year guaranteed roof and stay within the six point five million dollar budget. So I have them preparing contract documents and we'll be signing those soon. Uh, the Memorial Day Parade is coming up on Monday, May twenty-seventh. The it'll. The parade will form on Main Street at ten AM with a planned start time of ten thirty. And it looks like we're gonna have good participation this year from people joining. That should be a really good parade. Um, I'm gonna say I'm happy to announce the Mascoma Lakeside Park is coming closer and closer to be coming within budget. Um, as I told you guys, we signed some contracts that pushed us over budget thinking that we could manage those down a little bit and work with some in-kind donations. Uh, we did receive that you guys will have it on your agenda next meeting for a public hearing. Uh, for a twenty-five thousand dollar donation from the Byrne Foundation. We've also received generous in-kind donations from Kurtzall excavation, Mike Burns, Defiance Electric, and it appears like Liberty Utilities will be donating some work as well. To put the overhead line above the, the boat ramp underground, so. Um, Defiance, Kurtzall, and Liberty combined together to get that project done for us, which will also be able to be used to offset some grant expense. Um, I also wanted to thank DPW who donated time, trucks, and materials to help reduce the cost and maximize the in-kind donation amounts. And I'd like to thank Kurtzall excavation and C Small Properties, our two contractors for working with the town to reduce the overall costs of the project, so. Um, don't wanna guarantee that we're within budget now, but we're, it looks like we're really, really close. And I think by the time we get all the in-kind donations together and the, the money there will be, will be right on target, so. Happy to see that and the project's coming along well also. Um, the police department has received a grant through the DEA. Um, six thousand dollars to pay for overtime um, for drug investigations and, and drug enforcement, so. Let's get that grant. Um. Wanted to let the select board know that I agreed to partner with Holly Drive Association. And last week we applied for a combined stormwater grant through the Long Island Sound Foundation. For the replacement of the undersized culvert that failed last year. And to completing check dams and stormwater work around Loth Haven Road for the town. Um, to minimize stormwater impacts and sediment runoff into Crystal Lake. And ultimately the Mascoma River and Connecticut River watersheds. Um, this grant, if we receive, it would be a fifty percent matching grant. And each organization would pay the proportional fifty percent of their projects, so. Um, I was happy to, to partner with them as the town and be able to put both of our projects on there and. See if we can't help solve some of those problems that we've been having. Um, we will know in November is when that grant gets announced, so. Keep the board apprised whether we get that or not, and we do believe at least the Loth Haven portion of that, that we can, we can fit that within. Probably within our normal budget. If not, it would be a very minimal cost to, to increase our stormwater action along Loth Haven Road. On. On September fourteenth FEMA declared a major storm disaster. Um, for the July ninth through seventeenth storms. I was informed this week that the town of Enfield has received an award for fifty-six thousand eight hundred eighty-seven dollars to offset the cost of repairs, so. Sounds like I say this every time, but I thank DPW and Chief Holland again for staying on top of making sure we get those turned back in and get the money back to the town. Let's. Let's do the town.
Hmm.
Um, Elise has been working diligently. A lot this last week to make sure that the new website is working correctly. We do have what I'd call a rough draft of a website. And we're going through checking links and updating minutes and making sure everything's in order. We're hoping to be able to launch that new website on or around June first. Pretty exciting to finally be coming to the end of that project. Um, wanted to share the Enfield Shaker Museum, Chosen Vale Incorporated, shared with me that they were awarded a preservation award. From the New Hampshire Preservation Alliance for the rescue and acquisition of the adjacent Shaker and La Selette's landscape and buildings, so. Nice again to see Enfield be.
The rescue.
The rescue. Again, it's nice to see Enfield. Being recognized outside of the town or the upper valley, so. Um, the veterans exemption discussion that we talked about last meeting, I just wanted to let the select board know that um, our assessing department has contacted DRA. And we are still continuing to work on that. It's not on your agenda at this meeting because there's more work to be done to, to get that figured out, but. We do continue to work on that. Um, couple other good news things. I'm happy to announce that the Enfield Recreation, Kevin worked with the United Way. And we have received a donation of seventy-five backpacks full of supplies for the youth that'll be attending camp this summer, so. Good work on his part to, to hear about this program, reach out and make sure that. Enfield is taken care of.
Cool.
With that, as you guys know, um, CBA approved two variances for Larran- Laramie Farms. Um, one for the height restriction and one for multiple lots or multiple buildings by a lot, so that'll be, that'll be moving forward as they. Um, prepare their plans and get ready to, to move towards the planning board. Um, and then the Planning Board Massier Planning Task Force had two successful community input events, the May ninth and May eleventh events. Um, Rob estimates that over the two sessions, there was approximately eighty-five people that stopped in to give their opinion, so it was. Well-attended and, and two great events. And. Again, with FEMA, DPW met with FEMA this last week, not only looking at. Getting reimbursed for the events, but they met with FEMA this week to look at further funding availability for mitigation activities to. To help things not wash out and cause problems in the future, so they'll be continuing to look at some, some funding opportunities. With that. Um, the crack ceiling project that I told you about was a success. Um, DPW worked on nine streets consisting of eleven lane miles. And about seventy thousand square feet were completed at a savings of fourteen percent or four, seven thou- seventy thousand square. Were completed, the savings about fourteen cents per square or ninety-eight hundred dollars to the town for us doing our own work instead of getting a contractor. Um, Maple Street paving was completed and shoulder gravel was added. Um, State of New Hampshire has signed off on the Shaker Bridge scope and fee schedule and the site will be surveyed starting this week, so we're continuing to. To move forward with that engineer and engineering will be, will be starting on that project.
Is that the boulevard or where are we?
Shaker Boulevard, yeah. And then spring.
Like that temporary.
Spring, like, spring grading is about seventy percent complete, so the DPW's been out. Getting all around town trying to, trying to get grading done. Um.
It really looked, even during mud season compared to other towns, you can tell when you get to, they've done a really nice job.
Yeah, no, they worked really hard to do that. You know, as I reported earlier, they were doing a lot of tree trimming and opening up the streets, which will. Just help with that in the future even more. They've been, DPW's been working really hard to make sure the roads are in good condition.
Any other questions for Ed? Well, if we move on to the business of the evening, uh, starting with community building ramp maintenance discussion. This is the ramp on the community building at Hughes Park. Most people have probably noticed the stones, it's odd. Falling off, so Ed, why don't you walk us through the options that are.
I don't give a damn what's gonna be here, but we'll. We can get to that part, but. Really what it, what had happened, we've been talking for a couple of years now on the ramp repairs and we've gotten multiple estimates looking at, at different ways to do things and. You know, we've looked at replacing the stones that are there, taking parts of them off, putting new ones in place. We've looked at um, taking the stones off completely and kind of skim coating it with concrete or some other surface and. And just really looking at different ways to do that and putting those together. If we replace the entire facade with new stone, since we would have trouble matching the stone that's there. It would be plus or minus ten thousand dollars. If we repair or replace some of the stones that are missing with something close, that wouldn't be the same. We're looking at something around four to five thousand dollars. And then if we remove the stone completely, partially because we can do this with in-house labor. We can remove the stone, put a backer board type surface on it. And then coat that with concrete, either stained or unstained, and we're looking somewhere in the thousand dollars worth of. Materials. And then, of course, we'll have some, some labor into that. Um. What DPW is recommending for long-term. Um, facility maintenance is that we, we move forward with the removing of the stone, replacing it with a cement coating. Stained or unstained. Phil Derrick today when we were talking that if we wanna stain it, I'll let you guys. Fellers, but um. We do think that that's from, that's the best long-term solution. It'll change the look a little bit, but it um. It'll be nice, smooth, easy. We can do repairs in-house, not only now, but in the future. And the problems we've been having with it is the wire mesh that they put on to put the rocks on is where the water gets behind. It ultimately fails and starts popping the rocks off, so. We think we'll have a longer term fix. It's more economically feasible. And it's something that if we do have spalling or issues in the future, we can go back and fix it very easily with our people and.
Hmm. Yeah, seemed like a no-brainer to go with option number three, I think.
I think so.
I, I disagree. I think it should be, we should go with the repair option. I think the look will be dramatic. In terms of uh, removing everything and trying to go with a cementitious finish. Um, I think it'll lose something in terms of the look. It'll look very plain. Regardless of whether you think about a color. I think in respect of what was done before, and it isn't completely done yet. I think it's a reasonable estimate. And spending the four thousand dollars makes sense to repair it. Uh, to get it back to something that the original. Folks who built the building wanted it to look like.
Um, my first thought was we could ask. It's the Lions, right?
It is.
We could ask them if they have any interest in preserving the character of the ramp.
A great suggestion.
I think the Lions are in and out of that building all the time and I won't speak, obviously can't speak for them, but I feel like. They are usually a pretty motivated group. If they wanna do something, they do it.
Hmm.
Um, you know, maybe they could be prompted to do it, but I, you know, I love stone, real stone, but stone veneer is always problematic and. I'm in favor of going, I, I don't like the look of concrete, but I am not in favor of spending money over and over. We've had a hard enough time taking. We haven't done an adequate job taking care of this building period.
I agree completely there, and I think it's a question where it was simply not maintained properly and. As we saw it fall apart over the last three or four years now. Uh, it could have been stopped at points where we began to see deterioration.
But what did um, the mason think would be the lifespan, some likelihood that it would last?
We didn't really get into, I don't know the lifespan, but they said it would, it would happen again. It's happened before. I don't think it's getting.
Properly sealed and watched, I believe it'll last for many more years. Um.
The one, one consideration for me is we need to develop a program of maintaining buildings, particularly as we have two really. Important building budgets and having that capability in-house.
Hmm.
Uh, and picking construction methods that we can maintain.
Yep.
And.
Maybe.
In this case, that leads me to, yeah, it won't look quite as good, but skim coating it with. When in the short term is the less expensive option, but in the long term is within the skill set of our employees and will be easier to maintain with the full. Uh, but I think that that, that maintenance component, we, we've done a very poor job of it in the past and. Uh, as evidenced by many of our buildings and the two main construction projects we're doing, and we want to avoid that in the future.
I always wonder why we aren't, we don't have a written maintenance plan for, which has buildings and cycles. Now, building like corporations too, this whole district had one, I think they lost the binder somewhere along the way, but. No, I'm not even kidding you. I mean, I helped walk around and count every chair and do it. Um, but in order to be able to include it in the budget, they had to have it, so we did, and it was very much like you paint X number of rooms each year, you do X. We, like, uh, these chairs are a great example, right? They have a lifespan. We should be planning on some of these things, so. I guess I'd like to see us move into a proactive, so we look, we evaluated, we had five chairs in for replacement and we're like, hey, we don't need them, fine. But they don't just disappear and they don't wait until they end up as like a work order ticket because frankly. How do you pick which is the most urgent thing that's falling apart around here? And it's a, we have a lot of buildings. It's gonna happen to Lakeside Park. There's no plan there. To take care of it. There's no money to take care of it. It's gonna happen to everything if you don't do it.
So therefore the s- more simple we keep the needed repairs, the better, I think.
I just, I don't love the look either. I'm definitely.
I don't like the look and I think it's bailing out on something that can still be repaired and properly maintained in the future.
And I had asked about like how Kellon Library, not Kilton, um, but how has the um, indents from the wood? But it sounded like that wasn't a good one either. It's just me asking because it's basically, it's not exciting, but it gives it a little texture, so it's left boring, but.
You could stamp it with.
But would the texture be a maintenance problem to that list, though?
It makes it harder to fix it in the future? I, I do like Alice's idea. We could approach them and if they wanted to. Donate the cost, we could, we could go with the, the.
What if we say we'll do it, we're gonna say yes to fixing it at the basic cost unless. They want.
That's what I'm saying. I think that's the.
The other option is go back to the contractor and ask him to do it on a time and material. The other option is go back to the contractor and ask him to do it on a time and materials basis, not to exceed that price.
What contractor?
The cutting edge mason proposal, no, let's do the repair for thirty nine fifty five seventy nine cents on a time and materials basis against that number. And see if we can save a little money that way as well as approaching the Lions and see if they'll contribute.
Well, if we have a vote, I'm going to vote for the thousand dollar option.
Yeah.
Um, I'll make a motion that we um, approve going with option three, which is to remove the existing stone facade and replace the cement coating. That's about seven, about a thousand dollars in material with the caveat that we will, the town office will contact the Lions and offer them the opportunity to do a repair or make a donation for the repair. Um, and that that repair happened if the Lions want to do it. Otherwise we go with option three. Is that too confusing?
Let's just keep it simple.
Okay.
Thousand dollars, period. But we have a motion on the table.
Well, you don't have a second yet.
And it's a terrible motion. Let me try it again. I know I'm, I'm looking at Whitney. I'm like, this was terrible.
You don't want me to read what I wrote down?
Oh, sure. I mean.
Uh, the motion to approve option three with the caveat that the town office would contact the Lions and offer them the opportunity to make a donation for the option two repair.
That's a lot. Look at, this is why she's our meditator and I am not. I like it. That's my motion.
A second.
Okay, so there's a motion on the table. Is the discussion of the motion.
I remain opposed.
I would be opposed to this one. You go what?
We can compromise. We've approved a thousand dollar fix and if the Lions are invested in the appearance, we can give them the opportunity to help.
I'd like to see us approach the Lions as you suggested, which is excellent. See if they will contribute towards the repair and then we'll make the decision accordingly.
Um, can I just throw out a straw poll? I think, I mean, not as a motion, but like if this, because I offered this as a compromise, right? Because I'm a, I, otherwise I'm an option three only. So if you've got a bunch of option three onlys, then there's no sense in dragging this out.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
I have one.
Option three only. Sorry about that.
Or you can make an amendment.
Oh Jesus, let's just vote it up or down.
Yeah.
Let's not amend things.
Okay, so we have motion on the table. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, so which one?
The most.
Aye.
Motion on the table.
Yes.
Which, which is.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, so the motion fails two to three. And so John, we have another motion. Option three, period.
Second.
Okay, so we have a, a new motion on the table to uh, select option three, which is to remove the existing facade and replace with cement coating. Is the discussion of the motion.
I remain opposed.
Mm-hmm. Seeing none? Um, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, motion passes four to one. Okay, um, next give us a million dollar project and we pass it and look at his whip. Sometimes the details are uh.
Listen, I was just here to try to compromise and work it out. I, I.
Let's, okay, twenty twenty four paving bid results.
So you have in your packet, the actual bid results. Um, I think this one's pretty simple. We're making your recommendation to go with Blacktop at seventy nine dollars and ninety seven cents a ton, which is the lowest.
I think it's.
Done a good job for us in the past.
And I think it's worth indicating, telling for the public and posterity that bids ranged from a total price of two hundred and twenty five thousand, seven hundred fifty five dollars and thirty one cents all the way up to three hundred and fifty two thousand dollars. And that there are five bids and they span the whole gamut. So we, not only are we picking the lowest bid, we're going with somebody we're comfortable who's done good work.
Well, the RFP will be on the town website one.
Yes, but I'm saying that this is going to go into the minutes and people don't read and dig in. So just if someone wants the short version, this is the, I make a motion that the town accept the summer paving proposals submitted by Blacktop Incorporated of West Lebanon, I'm sure.
Second. Person wishing, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
With both, motion passes.
Off the subject but related, do we know where they're going to pave this year?
Um, they have a list out, but they're still negotiating with that to make sure that we stay within our budget. So.
So perhaps at the next meeting you can clarify a list of roads we'll be paving?
Get a list of what we're planning on.
I'd just like to have it on the minutes for people to see it.
Good idea. Okay, Conservation Commission application from Thomas Klaus. He's got great experience. He's a huge outdoor enthusiast, just an ideal candidate, I think.
So, and I had a conversation with him today. So my only concern, and I express it to add, is not about Thomas himself. It's that we have, this will give us three people from Crystal Lake and two from Holly Drive, which is not really a cross-section of the town. Um, he seems very nice. I have found working with him to be very pleasant every time. So that's not an objection against his character. I just wanted to say that so you guys know. Um, I talked to Ed, we did just do a training session with Conservation Commission that, and I said we could catch him up in terms of, you know, right to know and, you know, how we work on broad projects, not individual projects. Mm-hmm. You know, Holly Drive has some pretty serious issues, but that's not a conservation issue.
Right. And as with all land use, the matuzol.
Of course.
And whatnot.
Yeah.
Um, and we take the good volunteers where we find them. If we, if we had a dozen applications, we do.
That's.
Ban the committee.
That was the conversation that I had with Ed. I don't, you know, it's nothing against him as an applicant. Um, it just is something that's good to know when we're looking for diversity, but sometimes you, there's no one to be diversity. And so we'll just make sure that we are focused on the town as a whole, I think.
Can we vote on that? Yes. Intain a motion to appoint Thomas Klaus to the Conservation Commission. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Welcome Thomas Klaus to Conservation Commission. And we have a couple of policies for review tonight, starting with the policy to accept and establish trusts from private funds for RSA thirty one ten nineteen. I don't believe there's any changes to this policy from the past. Um, and we're just including it as part of our annual review of policy.
I don't believe there are any changes. If there are, the only change it would be, would be from selectmen to select board, but there's no substantial changes.
Yeah.
Um, I just wanted to say out loud for posterity, I think we need to be very careful about just going and establishing these trusts and really looking if the trust that we're creating and the project it's for fit within our strategy. Because in the past, we haven't looked at strategy or any of our goal. We've just taken the money and then it can turn into, you know, very expensive in terms of stat and other resources. So I, I know that can't really necessarily fit in the policy, but I wanted to just say it out loud. That's kind of my philosophy. And it makes me a little nervous that we might be like, oh my gosh, they're giving us money. Uh, and we've gotten a lot of very nice things over the years without planning for their future.
Makes sense. Should that come up again, that we look at the master plan carefully and make sure that uh, things line up?
Well, in our case, it really wouldn't be the master plan. It would be our strategy, right? Because we.
Our own strategic plan would be a good place. That you're right.
And, and I guess I just want to be fair about our staff. I guess is my final thing, right? Because there's only so many humans to do the work.
Any other comments or concerns? If not, I entertain a motion to reaffirm the policy to accept and establish trusts from private funds and sources.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Reaffirmed our policy. The second one this evening is the purchasing policy. Again, I don't believe there's any changes.
Well, the only change is uh, you put in bold, which is nice.
Oh, yeah.
On page three.
Yeah, there's one change.
And uh, it, it's, it, it's just pointing out in particular that we now use purchase orders, whereas obviously when it was written before, we perhaps did not.
Well, we actually had a purchase order policy and this just rolls it into a single policy.
Right. The only thing I would note is that it says that it is getting rid of the purchase order policy of November fourth, two thousand and two, if I've read it correctly. But the, but this also would replace or supersede the purchasing policy of September eighteenth, two thousand seventeen.
Right. So the purchasing policy is it's been.
Right, yes.
It's the same purchasing policy with the purchase order policy.
Incorporated.
Incorporated.
Got it. Yeah, I was just, I, the only one I found was the one which is uh, from two thousand seventeen. So that one can be deleted from the new website.
Um, the only just general question I had is I, the asterisks are references to kind of definitions later. Um, it's like there's two asterisks and then three, and I didn't know if we should just have it be like one and two. I, I just was for clarity, because when I looked at it, um, sometimes they're used for call out and I didn't know whether, it's not a big deal, but. Or see, it's really not, whatever you guys think at the end of the day, we'll make it so people will read it and use it correctly. I'm going for.
Need further discussion? Well, then I would entertain a motion to adopt the purchasing policy as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. All right, there's some administrative items. Include the famous little taxes documents. Is there any action for those tonight or are they just?
No, they're just, they're in your package. Two of them have been signed and in your package and signed by you.
There is more than just these.
There's four total, but two of them have been signed by the.
There's two that are.
So the others are going to come along?
Yes, vision should be in the sign there sometime soon. And then whaleback was presented there after the meeting. So they have to go talk to their board and those types of things, but I'm sure it'll be coming back around.
Good, that's great.
I have a question on, on the uh, Chosen Vale, it refers to it as the association.
All of them do.
That all of them.
It's a legal term that says in the beginning, here's what they are. And from here on out, the contract, they'll be considered the association.
All right, thank you.
It makes it easy to use the same contracts over and over again.
And for clarification, and we talked about this last time, you said that uh, Chosen Vale, the entity now fully include, includes all of the former La Salle properties under the one nomenclature of Chosen Vale Inc.
Yeah.
Good point. Okay. There's no further discussion of the administrative items. We go on to other business, started with public comment. There any comment from the public this evening? Okay, then is there other business? Before we, we have the RSA for that.
Yes, I can help you with that.
Is there any other business before we go into non-public to discuss the sale of property? Oh, I did have one more thing. Uh, just thinking about summer schedules. Um, I know my schedule for the summer, I will be in town for the first meeting in July, which is July first. I will be out of town unavailable for the second date in July. We don't have to make decisions today, but it is sort of the time to start figuring out our summer schedule and maybe on the.
I will be out of town for the second meeting in June.
Yeah, so we can just start, maybe at our next meeting, we can decide if there are any meetings we want to proactively cancel or, or whatnot.
I just say that I'm a big fan of canceling at least one side meeting.
We have traditionally canceled the first July meeting in the past.
Right, and I'm just bringing it up now so we start thinking about it so that in our next meeting, we can make that decision. So that we have final notice and a warrant settled. Okay, um, unless there's any other business or comments from folks, we're going to.
I'll make a motion to go into non-public in accordance with RSA.
Ninety one A three D, real estate.
I'll bet you some, what he said.
Thank you, audience.
Is there a second? Second, okay, I believe it's a roll call vote for.
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Tracy, yes.
John, yes. Eric, yes. Thank you, everybody. We're in non-public. We will be out shortly.